Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I know Rob's gonna be joining us, but since we have the majority of the board here, I just wanna thank you all for giving some time this evening. I'm being very optimistic that we really won't be on this call till 8:30, so I'm hoping that we can get through things. But I don't wanna rush the process as well, so I wanna be respectful of everyone's thoughts and ideas as we go through this. But really, my goal tonight is after we kinda look at the guardrails again, you know, this is our second round of going through this and having input of others. And Kim, Kelly and I, as the SOFG Committee, we've just kind of put those suggestions and thoughts that people have provided back into the work. My goal would be for us to be able to give these to Tom tonight, so that he could provide some interim guardrails. I know for some, you kinda need to see the whole totality of this. And so seeing how he would interpret this would kind of give you a clearer picture of things. So I'm hoping by the time we're done talking this evening, we would be able to give those to him and just see about how long it would take for him to get something back to us for interim guardrails. So in saying that, I can have the guardrails put up on the screen if that's easier for everyone. I don't know if everyone has them in front of them. But I think, Kim, are you able to get that on the screen for us? Great.
Well, maybe.
Okay, I don't know if there's anything I need to do.
Do we know when Erin set this up, did she give anybody like a host capability or the ability to share?
Here, I think.
Normally, we're all able to share. Okay, there we go.
Are you seeing it? Okay.
Yep. Yep, we see that. So.
Could you make it just a little bit bigger? I can read it okay, but if it was a little bigger, that would be great. Thank you.
So as you can see, what Kim has up there, and she's scrolling through it, just kind of the process that we've been through. We have Tom's response to what we had there. And then if you go ahead and scroll down, we got feedback on July 1st. And so then what we did was between the feedback we've gotten from our first round and our second round, this is the finished product that we have come up with. And everyone can see those. I'll just give you a moment to read it. And then I would say if you just wanna give your thoughts about what you see, and then we can just kinda go further from there.
Right off the bat, I'm pretty sure number one, the double negative makes it look like he is perpetuating systemic racism. I suppose that goes for two as well.
The "shall not without," that is definitely a double negative. And I was wondering about that in our previous iterations.
Yeah, the purpose for, I mean, in one iteration, it was "shall not perpetuate systemic racism" was the original written word of this. But we want the district to not only be anti-racist, but we want to move in the direction of perpetuating anti-racism. So in order to stay in the "shall not" language and try and highlight the importance of not just being anti-racist, but being, you know, perpetuating anti-racism, which we feel is a stronger approach to our anti-racism work. We felt that this was the best way to write that "he shall not act without perpetuating systemic anti-racism." So I think in that original statement, it was "shall not act," "shall not perpetuate racism."
I'm just trying to think through whether or not there's a way to say the same thing without it being a double negative. I have to think about that a little more.
Not to change the subject, but also number one, I wonder if marginalized is necessary?
You know, I feel like, wasn't there another reference in an earlier version of this that I'd have to go back and look?
I think we can go back up. Kim, I think we might have always used marginalized, but let's go back up and just see if it's something different in the.
Yeah, we have always had marginalized in Tom's original response to the guardrails. He requested that we remove it. So I think you probably saw that strike through in Tom's feedback.
Maybe that's what I was thinking about, because I knew in an earlier version, there was some reference to marginalized. And it was when he took it out. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
So I'd just like to talk through that for a second, just sort of the pros and cons of leaving that in. I'm assuming, and correct me if this is wrong, but I'm guessing that you guys put this in because we want to highlight that we're being equitable towards populations who historically have not been. And I'm guessing that what Tom's thinking is that we're going to equitably treat all students that way regardless. So I think we're on the same page for what we want. Is this really just a rhetoric thing, Tom, or what's your thinking on this?
Yeah, I think we're on the same page. Just to me, if we say equitable treatment of a specific group, it suggests that equity is different for different groups.
Well, and in some ways, equity does make things different for different groups, but I see what you're saying.
If we say we're going to treat one group equitably, to me, it suggests that there's another group that we don't need to treat equitably. That's not a hill I'm gonna die on. That's just something as an English teacher who doesn't sit right with me.
Yeah, I know where you're coming from. That's why I'm trying to just think through that.
So I guess this is more of a broad, I don't know. I don't know if it's a criticism or what, but when I look at these five, these are all related to equity work in some form or fashion. So what we're proposing is to get rid of all the other limitations and then just stick with these five that are all equity-based. And that's what we're gonna say is the only thing that matters?
Well, I think to go back.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I was gonna say, to respond, I mean, really, this becomes, we haven't gone through a whole rewrite. And we know that there are still management limitations that we'll look at in kind of other sections and placing it, and that just hasn't been done yet. These are the, when we think through our goals and our guardrails, this is what eventually, when guardrails are done, is how we evaluate our superintendent. So these are the things that, that's why our interim guardrails will be smart. We'll measure that, and those are the points by which we complete our superintendent eval. So not to say those other things are not important. They tend to then maybe be housed someplace else within that policy, within our policy structure, just not in the form of a guardrail to measure the superintendent.
Okay, so then with that said, what this would look like is in the weeks we're not doing monitoring on our targeted academic goals, we're gonna be doing monitoring on these target, you know, anti-racist ones. Like, I'm not sure I see the value in having the same conversation every two weeks. Like, these aren't that different to me. They're all kinda housed in the same orbit, I guess would be a way to put it.
I think a lot may come in when we see Tom's interpretation of these guardrails and how he defines interim guardrails, which we don't know yet, right? Because we have to kind of get set and solid in this framework in developing this guardrail language so that he can then take that back to develop what those SMART goals are gonna be. And that may, because I don't know that, I look at these and I don't necessarily think that we're gonna be monitoring the same thing on every item here. I think that in my head, I could envision a few things that might be, quite a few things that would stand out and be different with each of these guardrails.
Okay, then what do you envision? Because I'm really having a hard time seeing the difference. Like, okay, so let's look at the one with the recruit and retain, right? I mean, I can very easily see that, like, nope, it's not ready yet. Nope, it's not ready yet. And then we just mark that non-compliant. Like, there's certain things that just take more than two months to implement, right? So I'm having a really hard time getting my head around this.
So like our SMART goals for academics, the interim guardrails would be smart as well, and they would be a one-to-three-year due date. It's not going to be, we're not expecting a two-month turnaround. We would have those interim measures, just like we do now with our other SMART goals. So we'd be hoping to make progress towards the goal. We would want them to be predictive of the overall goal, but we're not expecting miracles in two months by any means. And know that we wouldn't be monitoring, these would go on a monitoring calendar over the course of the year. We wouldn't be monitoring these at the frequency of which you're describing either. So like the SMART goals for academics.
I guess that's my, right, they come up, you know, three times a year or whatever. And then if these only come up once a year, then, I don't know. I'm just having a hard time seeing the value in this versus just saying, this is your limit. We're gonna break the XYZ system. Like, I'm not sure why it's better.
The reason why we feel it's a better move is because we'll be able to monitor with just more defined, I hate to use the word "guardrail," but more defined constraints. So right now, we read a report on the treatment of students, and there's no real way to identify whether or not we're compliant or not. It's all very, we're getting a report that is very informative. There's a lot of information in it. I can only imagine how many hours it takes Tom and his team to put it together. But at the end of reading it, there isn't a way to say, yes, we are headed in the right direction, or no, we're not, based on data. So we want to see the data that supports each of these guardrails throughout the monitoring process.
So there'd be one to three interim guardrails for each of these, and each of those would have a monitoring cycle. So the one, for example, about retention of our workforce, we're probably really only going to be able to get data on that once, maybe twice a year, right? Just because if we think about the natural cycle of contracts, and we might wanna know, like, after first semester, after the beginning of a new calendar year, did we lose a bunch of, you know, our bus drivers or our custodians? Or, you know, some of those who are not on contract in the same way our teaching staff are. But like, some of the things about recruiting, that might be, like, during the summer, how are we recruiting to fill vacancies? But also, just like when we used to have our thing, our fair, right? So that might be a couple times a year. And there might be a third component of that that Tom will come up. Those are just the two that I'm thinking, like, we definitely want reports on those two things that he might come up with, and that one maybe gets monitored, I don't know, quarterly or something that talks about being culturally responsive or something. So each of these might have different frequencies at which we monitor them. Like, they might not be the three times a year like our SMART goal. Some of them could be monthly, some of them could just be annually. Is that kind of what we're thinking? And that's sort of set by what the interim guardrail is, that Tom writes, that we approve that then, right? And then we'd also approve that monitoring calendar that he would set. I don't know if that helps you, Kalen, at all, but like, I just had to talk that out loud to make sure that I'm under, like, I think I'm processing what this would look like.
Yeah, no, what you said makes a lot of sense for that particular one, right? But for the rest of these, there's a ton of overlap in them, and I don't see what the value for having this many is, for one thing, and for how much monitoring we'd have to do. I guess what I'm saying is I'm worried that, I mean, we get, the reading one is basically the same report, right? And we have the same conversation twice in a row for more than two hours every single time. Like, to me, this seems like a lot of really big meetings that's gonna have a ton of overlap.
Are you thinking especially like, well, now it's labeled six and seven, but how they both mention "systems" and perpetuating "systems"? Is that kind of what you're thinking of? Like, that has a lot of overlap?
Yeah, that's part of it. And then I guess the 10 one there, I'll have to reread that again, but I think that's pretty similar as well.
Well, that's talking about.
That one's different, yeah.
Yeah, that one's different. I think the only, yeah, that's where I'm kind of confused. I'm trying to understand, I don't see all my bits being the same.
It's very different interim guardrails on each of these.
Well, I think we've talked about how the first two, we've talked about trying to combine those, and I don't think we've come up with a way that has made us happy. But we have had that conversation before about how those are very similar, but like, there's value in keeping them separate, because otherwise, it just becomes a long list of things instead of two separate guardrails.
Well, and when you look at it, we originally gave you a list of six, and we did combine one and two in that original, to take it down to five, I believe. And I think, yeah, I know that, yeah, we did try and combine.
Maybe I was running an old list, but then I guess my next concern then is with number one. So without perpetuating systemic, we'd read it, you know, the positive or the double negative or whatever, but are we gonna be comfortable when the interim guardrails, only two of them, and people come back and say, well, there's 15 other systemic racist systems? What are you gonna do about those?
I think that's when it comes back. When Tom brings back his interpretation, we need to look at that and say, yes, this is what we wanted. If it's not what we wanted, then we didn't write that correctly. And so then that becomes, do we have to go back? I mean, we've gotta answer that. It's hard to know without seeing Tom's interpretation whether or not we feel that that is what it's coming back at. But we do have to be solid on, you know, one to three interim guardrails and, you know, hopeful that when he does bring it back, that that was the intention behind writing the language that we have. I mean, it's not like he brings it back and we're done, and we're like, yep, we accept. I mean, this is a back.
No, no, but that's my concern with that one in particular is I'm not sure we'll be able to name just two or three of these that's gonna be sufficient. I feel like that's gonna open a can of worms. It's gonna be causing lots of headaches just because of the community input around it, the touchpoints that matter to these people and more to those people and less to this group. Like, it seems thorny, and it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be hard. I'm not trying to say make this easy. I'm just saying this one seems a lot bigger than we think it's going to be.
Kalen, can you give me an example of where your brain's going with like 15 different systems? Because I'm just not sure that I'm seeing that many possibilities.
Well, I mean, if you wanna get, I mean, at a fundamental level, right? You can just say the entire thing is built on a racist foundation. We're gonna break it down. But if you wanna get specific and say, okay, we've got racism in our hiring process, and we've got racism in our retention process, right? Let's say those are the two that Tom came up with. Well, what about treatment of students? What about discipline of students? What about, you know, support for minority, new hires, support for whatever? Like, pretty soon, we've got a lot of checkpoints in there just because you could either keep it super broad on one, which defeats the purpose in a way, or get specific, which is what I think we want, but there's a lot of specific areas. And that's just me rattling off a few right now, but that's what I've been thinking about.
And I think that's where too, like, we're still missing a huge piece of this, which I think is why we're kind of, you know, circling back and forth with all of this, is we don't know how the superintendent is going to interpret this. And that's why we really need to get to a point where we can give this to him so that we can see what his interpretation is, so that we can come back and then have those conversations. So I think that's a huge piece that we're missing. And so we're talking about what we think all of these things could be. At the end of the day, it matters what he thinks these things could be, and that's really what we need to see. And that's why I'm hoping, you know, by the time we finish this conversation, we can give this off to him to see that, because otherwise, we're going to continue to dissect what we envision it could be, when that's really not for us to do. Our job was to create these guardrails that we own, and now the next step is to hand it over to Tom and say, okay, now tell us how you're interpreting those with your interim guardrails. So I think that's the piece that we really need. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to dissect between these one and five guardrails and say, well, I don't know about this. Well, it could be that. It could be that. It's not our role to figure out what that could be. That's his role. And we really need to see what he comes up with and then have the conversation again. And then maybe that's where, you know, we go through things a little deeper, but we've gotta have that piece, and that's the piece that we're missing.
So if he comes back with, sorry, so I'm just making sure I'm following the process. So if he comes back with interim guardrails that don't match what we thought, that's where we get more specific in our writing. And I understand what Kalen's saying when we're talking about, you know, making our systems anti-racist. Like, there are a lot of, we can talk about the school system, but really, all of us that have been in schools know there's multiple systems in there, and Kalen listed them. So really, then it's up to our superintendent to decide either how to define that and what he's gonna tackle as part of that guardrail, or define what he's gonna tackle as part of this first one-to-three-year chunk of that. Because this guardrail, to me, feels like we might keep this for three years, and in three years, the future board might decide, like, we need to do this again because we haven't met it completely. So, yeah. So I guess my next question is then, if we're creating these guardrails, Tom might be compliant with his interim guardrails. Does that automatically make complacency on the overall guardrail? Or maybe that's a way future conversation we should have later? But that just dawned on me too, of like, especially that first one. If we're talking about getting, like, creating, making all of our systems anti-racist, like, you know, that's not gonna happen overnight. And so what's our expectation for evaluation for the superintendent then?
So Kirsten, this is something that we haven't shared with you all yet, but there is an actual superintendent evaluation that we use for this process. And what we'll have to do as a board is decide how we wanna wait each, because we're going to be evaluating him on the goals, and we're also gonna be evaluating him on the guardrails. So that's gonna be a decision as a board that we're gonna have to decide. Okay, are we gonna say 50/50? Are we gonna say 60% on the goals, 40% on the guardrails? And so, yes, you're right. That's like a future thing that we'll have to decide. And we'll have to decide what that waiting is going to be, and we'll have to go through that process. So we have not shared that with you all yet of what the superintendent evaluation will look like, but that's definitely a conversation that we'll have to have.
Okay. Thank you for letting me process all of that out loud.
No, you're fine. That's what we wanna do. Like, really, I wanna make sure you all have a really clear understanding of this. And just so you know, I'm gonna see if, we're also gonna be doing some work with this, you know, with AJ here in August, just so that we can kind of get ready for this and just know that we're taking our time with this so that everyone can be on the same page and really understand what this is all about. We don't wanna move, that's why we decided to take this slow, so we can make sure that everyone is on the same page and really understanding it. And so we're kind of taking this by bits. And this, you know, of course, won't be effective until the next evaluative season.
Well, that brings up another important point here. We keep saying "we," but on December 1st, there might be five new people sitting here. If we put in all this background work and the five new, and whoever's in those seats thinks that this is a waste of time, there's a real chance it just gets thrown out. Like, I think we're doing a little bit of hard.
We believe right now is the right work as a board. We can't assume what the new board will believe is the right work. We have to.
That's fine. I'm just saying, there's a real chance this gets thrown in the dumpster in December.
And if that's the case, that's the will of that board.
Yeah, and I think we knew that going into this. I just think for me, this is, just as chair of this board, this is the work that I really, truly believe in, and I believe it's the right work. And believe me, Kalen, I've had all of these conversations by myself of, you know, going through this whole process and then a new board coming in and saying, squash that, we don't want it. But for me, just where I'm at right now and leading this board, I just truly believe this is the right work. And so far, you all are feeling the same way, so I think it is a chance that we take. Since we don't know what's gonna happen in November, you're absolutely right. Someone could say, you know what, we don't wanna be rattled with it. My hope is that that doesn't happen, but I do know that it's a reality. But I think right now, we just have to continue with the work and push through it. And my hope is this will be something foundational for boards of the future, and this is something that they'll keep. But of course, every board has their right to do as the will of the board, which I think sometimes can be frustrating for a superintendent as well, because you get one board that goes in one direction, then another board comes on and they change things, and that makes it very challenging to be in that position that Tom holds. So my hope is that it doesn't happen. I know he believes in this work too that we're doing, but, you know, we are taking a chance. It could absolutely happen.
And I think, you know, the work that we're looking to do even ahead of the November election, our preboarding session that we're hosting in August, and making sure we continue to talk about, this is the student outcomes-focused governance framework that the board started, but then didn't quite finish. And so we're really wanting to move in that full direction of full implementation of SOFG. And so, yeah, you're right. Somebody can come in and say, eh, we don't like it. But I think starting to build that into conversations in the community and why we're doing this, it's evidence-based. There's research behind moving boards in this direction. If we can stay our lane, that it does work. And so, and it like works to get outcomes for our kids, not how adults get to feel, but outcomes for our kids. And that's the work that, you know, we're all committed to be here for our kids, what we wanna see from them. And so, right, we just have to keep pushing this forward.
Maybe this isn't how you meant that to come up, but what I heard, what you just said, it sounds like that onboarding is gonna make it sound like this is the next step that's going to happen, and I have concerns about that.
I don't think it's saying like that. I mean, the onboarding is around, what is SOFG? Which is, here are our goals, here's what it's about. Well, and I don't even think we have in there, talking, well, we talk about, like, what is the purpose of guardrails? But we don't have any guardrails for our board. So right now, we're in half policy governance, half SOFG governance. And so we are looking to having a conversation with them around educating them of what SOFG is, what we're as a board currently doing, so that they start to understand when they come in, oh, this is the work of the Des Moines Board. And, oh, this is my role as a board member. And to understand what expectations are for board members. And not, I mean, I guess that's how I would frame it. I don't know.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, like, that's the work of this board, but this board is not gonna be the same as the next board.
But I think it's this board's responsibility to share what our current reality is, and this is our current reality. So when we're talking to people about what it means to be a board member, this is the current work that we are doing. So I think we share that along with the other things that we know that entail with being a board member. So I don't feel like we're giving them a misrepresentation of what the board does. This is our current reality, and we're sharing that. But that's not the heavy lift of what we're sharing either. We're still sharing the reality of what it is to be a board member and the work and the commitment that's involved to holding that position.
This is not easing my concern at all, what you guys are telling me. Like, this is not a done deal, and I don't wanna present that to anybody that it is.
Yeah, but I think it sets out a framework for where we're headed.
Where we are, but that's what I'm saying. We're not gonna be there.
Kalen, it's no different than when you came on the board. I mean, we've been through a fair number of iterations with our monitoring and also with our management limitations. And we have adjusted those along the way based on circumstances or other things that have happened that either require us to adjust them because of the interpretation or we choose to adjust them based on what's happening. It's no different than the decision we made that I think you suggested even a few weeks ago about even making some adjustments in the goal dates that are included in our goals. So this is really an opportunity for us to create the framework for where we're headed. And it also allows a fair enough amount of latitude as we get into the work for us to make adjustments along the way. But I can't imagine that there is anybody that would be coming on to this board that has enough depth of understanding around policy governance and around this work that would dare venture to go knee-deep into this without having a basic understanding of the why behind why we're at this point, but more importantly, changes that they might advance that would in any way push us so far down the road that it doesn't make sense. So I trust the process. So I, I trust the process. You know, I trust how we have gone about doing this work over time and circumstance. And I also recognize that with change in individuals also comes potentially a change in how we look at things. But I think we have to be prepared to sort of put a stake in the ground now so that whoever comes in doesn't have to feel like as they're on the fly learning, they also have to figure out all of this work at the same time. I think this is us just doing our due diligence so that we're creating a really strong framework and context for whoever comes in and onto the board in November.
I think the trick is don't, we can't fall in love with doing the research and spending the time that gets spent on the work as being a, a core reason for, for, for making the change. Um, because that's something that's inherently alienating to 99% of the people that didn't do the work. I understand its justification and I want to honor it. And I'm trying to honor the work that the three of you have put into it. Um, but for folks that are coming in as potential board members, being told that, listen, we worked really hard to create this and, 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 you know, we've studied this, that's great. And that needs to be said, but that can't, you can't, you can't go too heavy on an argument like that. And I think, you know, in regards to Kalen's point, um, I think it's fair to offer a balanced perspective of, of what monitoring has looked like for this board, uh, over the last, I don't know, four or five years. Um, and, you know, what the pluses and minuses of, of how that and how it's evolved and why it's evolved. Um, you know, because, you know, even the, this, the, the, um, the board's smart goals for academics, um, come with a certain amount of, of risk of, um, you know, hyper focusing on certain populations and, uh, excluding people feeling like you're creating the, the perception that people are excluded from priority with the board. So I think that there's, I think there's value in when this is laid out to potential board members to A, giving them some depth of history and B, balancing the, the conversation so that they understand some of the, um, some of the risks that are, that, that are inherent in a, in a system like this.
So can I just ask a question? Are there, because Kalen, I, I feel like I hear this from you and your questioning. Are you not wanting the board to completely dive into SOFG? Or, and are there others that are kind of like, eh, we're not really wanting SOFG?
Well, just to, to put my cards on the table, um, I still don't see, I don't see necessarily how this is better. And I ask the question every time and you guys give me an answer every time. I'm getting closer, but I, I'm not sold on this. This is, this is better and more efficient for one thing. For two things, there are a couple of the existing management limitations that if they don't make it into version two, I'm not going to support. Particularly the, the restraint around, uh, bargaining with, with, with the units. Like if that's not in there, I'm a no-go period. So just for instance, there's a couple of other ones in there. So I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm interested in is, is protecting some of the things that exist and finding out why this is more efficient and more effective. And, you know, you guys have laid out the research basis. I get all that. I don't need any more of that. Just in practice, it seems like it's going to be a lot of wheels spinning to me. And I'm, and, and like you guys said, until we get the interim ones, I'm not going to know it. But then on top of my other concern there about the new, the new board stepping in, like it's, it's fine. And Terry is right, you know, put the stake in, do the work, get, get ready to roll. But I don't want to tell anybody who, who gets elected like, oh, no, we spent six months on this. It's going to happen. That, I mean, this is what that person is going to use. I mean, potentially going to use to evaluate the superintendent. And if there's five new seats, they're not five new butts in these seats, then they might just like the old ones better. They might like 10 different ones instead. Like, we don't know that, but.
And that's where we have to figure this out because then that becomes real concerning and confusing to the superintendent. If we can't continue to have new boards come in and say, eh, we don't like that. We're going to change it. Eh, we're going to come in and we're going to change it. And I feel like you, and not you, Kalen, because you and I came on at the same time. But there are four of you that were on this board prior to the other three of us that you started down this framework. And so we're trying to finish and kind of get us fully in there. Um, so that was a decision made prior to three of us coming on this board.
But that's like, like what's the difference right now? We're saying, eh, you ain't going to change it. Why couldn't somebody else?
I suppose they probably could, but then it becomes.
That's what I'm getting at.
A huge, just, uh, I mean, it becomes a lot of concern, obviously. But then like part of what, what we're hoping to do too is kind of keep that solidarity or that consistency, I should say, not solidarity, a consistency for the superintendent as well.
And I guess that's part of why I'd rather just modify what we have than throw it out because then it's precedent setting that, that they just changed the whole hog. Why can't I?
And then that becomes, you have to agree, yea or nay to SOFG. And, and that's why I asked that question.
So I want to bring us back real quick because I, we, we can go kind of in circles with this all night long. And I think the thing that Kelly brings up is very key. Um, when I got on this board, we did say that this was the right work. I still believe that this is the right work. But we need to make sure that we all feel that this is the right work. I'm assuming so, but I hate to make the assumption. So do we want to continue in this direction as SOFG? And I, and I hate to even ask that question because I feel like I'm going all the way backwards. But I believe that's what I got when I started this. Um, I don't believe I've been blinded by my passion for it, but I believe that's where we were going. So I guess I should just put that question out there to you all is, are we moving in this direction of, of SOFG? Cause that's, that's what we've said, that my reasonings for moving us in this direction are, have been direct conversations that I have had with our superintendent. And I think this gives him more clarity versus the management limitations. And I, him and I have had some of those conversations. And so that's really moving in this direction and some of the training, you know, that I've had, Kim had, and Kelly has had, has had on this. And so I guess I need to make sure that this, we are okay with moving in this direction because that's where I kind of thought this board was.
I got, I got no problem generally with moving forward in the right direction. My, my concern has always been the speed and the rollout. Um, I do want to say though, for the record, that I don't, I, I may have been asleep at the switch for the last six years, but I don't recall talking about reducing, reducing the number of management limitations as part of student outcomes focused governance until the first half of this calendar year. So I, you know, I think Kelly, what you said seemed to imply that, you know, hey, you know, why'd you agree to do this in the first place then? And I, I agreed to do it because it made sense and I'm fine with moving forward with it. You know, if we, if we do it the right way, but this was, this is relatively new, a new concept to me within the last six months or so.
Yeah. And definitely it sounds like the board just never got to that level of the guardrails yet and was more comfortable in the space of the policy governance. So we operate right now in like partly SOFG and partly policy governance. And so the hope, or at least what the three of us continue to work on is trying to get us fully ingrained into SOFG. Now, you can, you talk to AJ and yes, we can absolutely live in policy and SOFG if that's what we choose to do. Now, will we get outcomes like we want? Maybe not. Um, so we just, is that the space people are comfortable with? I think that's where we all have to wrestle and answer the question um, for what we think is best. But again, we do that through the vision and values of the community and not through our personal lens.
I think the part that I'm struggling with is that we had vision, we went out to the community and we talked to the community around what we wanted our goals to be. But I don't know necessarily that I know that these guard, like these guardrails reflect values that I hold. And I assume that a lot of my neighbors hold, but I, I don't know if they reflect the vision that the community has. Does that make sense? Like, I think the values are in the right place. I just don't know if our vision is in the right place. And so in terms of like, do we live in, you know, SOFG or do we live in policy governance? Like, I don't know. And I also just, I have a hard time saying too, that like, there's no guarantees, I guess. I know that research supports it, but there's also no guarantees that if we go to standard, like students outcomes focused governance 100% that we're going to make faster progress than we are right now. Like, I know the research supports it, but there's no, there are no guarantees. And so I think we, you know, we have to do what the whole board is comfortable with, I guess.
Yeah. And I was under the impression that the whole board is comfortable with us moving in this direction at the creation of this ad hoc committee, which, um, was several months ago. Um, I believe it was shortly after I came on board, um, or was appointed. We created the SOFG committee in order to advance this work with the, the, the entire board being on board. Um, you know, the, this committee did not exist a year ago. So I'm, I'm really surprised to hear that we're, we're going back to, um, you know, a year ago.
I guess I'm not saying that like, I'm not on board with SOFG. I just don't know that I have the confidence I need to know that the guardrails match the vision and values of the community. Like if that's a, if that's a thing we want to hold these up against, I don't have that. I don't have that confidence because we haven't talked to the community about these at all yet. So like, to say that that's what they are, I struggle with that.
What we did as a, a committee when we were writing these is we looked at, um, the town hall meetings, we looked at the, the data that we received um, from the community feedback that, that Tom gathered. The most recent data that Tom gathered. Um, so that was kind of the basis of this work. Um, and, you know, again, like this is the, I think the fourth iteration that you've seen of these. And so now to be questioning, uh, where, where did the baseline come from? I'm, I'm just really surprised.
As far as I'm concerned on this, I guess my, my two thoughts are kind of in the same vein. One, when it comes to the, you know, the surprise that I'm not on board necessarily with this is because I didn't realize that work was about rewriting the limitations until this summer. I thought it was about fixing those academic goals. And then my second thought is, you know, I don't necessarily see those academic goals as being incongruent with the limitations we currently have, which is part of why I'm getting hung up on, on the efficiency and the, and the use of time for the, for this stuff. I get, for me, those, those seem to match up pretty well. And like, this is the business of doing the day to day stuff. This is our academic focus and I, I don't see why that's so incompatible. Allegedly incompatible.
And it's not necessarily incompatible. Like Kelly said, you can, you can live in both policy governance world and student outcomes focused governance world, which is where we're at right now. Um, it became apparent to us when we were monitoring some of those management limitations that we as a board were struggling with identifying whether or not we were compliant or not compliant. And I can, I can give you the, the board meeting dates of when we, when we discussed and when we really struggled with. Reading this report is very informative and I receive a great deal of information from it. And, um, but ultimately I don't know if it's inching us closer to our, um, to, to being compliant or not compliant or, or being where we want to be as a board and meeting those student outcomes. So, um, yeah, this, this was.
Can I step in there for a second then and ask a question?
Pardon me?
Can I step in there to ask a question then?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, as it stands, these, these current five ones, how, how does that make our algebra goal get closer, for instance?
Well, um, there's, there's a lot of research. Well, first, if you go to the, the feedback that we received from our community and if you look at, um, Tom's reports and research around, um, kind of the root cause of, of some of the concerns around why our students are not achieving. It is due to what we foresee is having interim guardrails that are going to show us that we have put systems in place that are going to be anti-racist. We've put systems in place to put black and brown teachers in front of our students. We've, we've put systems in place to ensure that we can keep them so that we have some, uh, you know, real longevity. Like, we didn't just pull this out of the, the thin air. This is, this is very much a part of the work and the reports that we've been receiving from Tom for a great deal of time right now. We are just putting it into measurable, quantifiable, smart goals or guardrails, pardon me, not goals. But we, we just want to be able to monitor it in a way that makes sense. And you, you've mentioned a couple of times, um, being more efficient. I don't know that this will be more efficient. That's definitely not something that, um, you know, I, I'm going to put a stake in and say, this is going to be more efficient. What I do know is it will be much clearer. We will all know as a team whether or not we're headed in the direction in which we've identified we want to move. And we will all be on the same page, moving in that same direction. Can I just offer something too? I, I was going to say, Kim, you beat me to the punch around root cause. Because really, if you look at, um, each and every one of the guardrails, it really goes to systems and policies. And right now, much of what we get goes to measurement absent evaluating whether or not the systems and policies we have in place are robust enough, strong enough, deep enough, wide enough to help us mitigate what we're seeing on the other end when it comes to student achievement. So these really create a much broader framework for us to do an analysis of the policies, which we know over time and circumstance have created those frameworks, which oftentimes lead to students of color and other marginalized populations underperforming. If we can get the systems right, then the other stuff hopefully will follow. But if we don't get to the root cause, then what we continue to see in student outcomes will continue until we can get to the root cause and the systems issues.
And the one question when we talk through guardrails is we should be asking ourselves, are we, do we think these areas are deficient enough and important that require urgent attention? If we do, then guardrails are a way to go because then we get to monitor. Because I tell you what, yes, the efficiency of management limitations, we look at those reports once a year. Well, we just approved two on consent this last board meeting. And I was looking at one, I'm like, this tells me nothing.
Should not have been approved.
And I don't know whether or not we're really, I mean, moving in, how that moves anything forward. It just shows, eh, we got something done. I don't know what, but we got something done. So, I mean, I think it's asking ourselves those questions of how aggressive we want to be to try and create change. Um, you know, what, what we would say is if we want to be aggressive, then or guardrails is the way to go.
So, Madam Chair, is it possible for us to determine based on sort of either a show of hands or a thumbs up or thumbs down, where we are with the entire board around moving to student outcomes focused governance and moving forward with the guardrails?
Yep. You took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to ask if I could just get a nod of heads, a shake of no, a nod of yes, that we want to move in this direction. So if we want to move in this direction of SOFG, um, if you could just give me a nod of yes. If you don't, a nod of no or a thumbs up. I just need to see something. Okay. All right. So.
Um, can I just make a comment, Madam Chair? I just wanted to say, I had forgotten that you all had said that this came from the town hall stuff. So there's just, you guys have been, put way more work on this. I think we've gotten a total of now maybe three hours to talk about a massive change to the way that the board does business. And so you'll just have to confuse, like forgive the rest of us that like, we're not picking up on this as fast as you are. And I can sense like a little bit of like frustration on the part, particularly of Kelly and Kim. And, you know, I apologize if I contribute, if I contributed to that. But you guys have like had hours and hours and hours to talk about this. And I've had time to read through this and think only inside my own head and then process ideas around you guys for maybe three hours. So like, just give me a little grace in that sometimes when I'm saying something, if it doesn't make sense, it's literally just me trying to process through it. But also I don't remember seeing the stuff in the town hall and I texted Duana about it. And what I'm wondering is if it came in during the school year last, this last year, it's not a wonder that I don't remember seeing it. Because I do vaguely remember us asking and then I'm like, was that like September or October or November or like one of the months, you know, where we were, not only was Des Moines switching modalities or talking about modalities, I was personally switching modalities at school. So like, if someone has that. So like, if someone has that handy and could just forward it to me so I could look at it again, I would really appreciate that.
So. Yeah, I appreciate that, just your reflection, Kirsten. So thank you for sharing that. And, you know, whatever the rest of the board, that is not as ingrained as the three of us because of just the work that we're doing, not only for this, you know, for our board, but the work we're doing in their, in our coaching, coaching and board chair sessions that we are currently going through with the council. So definitely we, we have that, that knowledge. But tell, help, you know, share with us, like what is it that you want to know? What would be helpful? And I know we continue to talk about how do we bring professional development to all of you. So if you have thoughts and ideas on what, what you'd like to learn more about, please let us know. And, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that we're sharing that information with you.
Well, and I know the pandemic has interrupted it. And Kelly and Caitlin, you guys didn't get the benefit of this, but we used to do like a full weekend retreat with AJ like every January. And then we do touchups during the summer. And that just hasn't happened now for, you know, over a year and a half. And so I would say like, whatever we do, because I know Kelly and Duana, I would just encourage the new board to make sure that you set those appointments with AJ and are doing those. Because I feel like that's when I do a lot of my learning. And we've just been out of the realm of even having those conversations with AJ for a while. Like I know he's been with us to help us on this little project or that little project, but we haven't had sustained learning as a board in a while, so.
And I will say, Kirsten, I actually did reach out to AJ. I'm going to have Erin send you all a doodle poll tomorrow. I think just for us to have a refresher with him and have him come here and spend some time with us will be very worthwhile for us. And, and, and you're right, like Kirsten, me, Kim and Kelly are ingrained in this. Not only just in talking about this, but because of the cohorts we're in. So we're required to really know this stuff inside out. And so we, we definitely are getting more than the board, but we also want to make sure that we're not leaving you all behind either as we're getting this information. And so you continue to ask the questions, continue to give us a call and have those conversations. But I did reach out to AJ, so you'll see something coming from Erin tomorrow. Just so we could have like a mini evening retreat. I know we haven't had a chance to really do that. So I, I did request that because I want to get us kind of going in this direction. Not only with, you know, the work that we're doing now, but looking at how we ask some of our questions and our monitoring conversations and those kinds of things. I do ask AJ for that feedback, just so I can make sure that we're really starting to move the needle forward. And so he'll review some things with us as well that I think is much needed, that, you know, we forget about. And like you said, we haven't been around him in such a long time. I did ask for him to come back, so you'll be seeing that. And hopefully we can get together next month and just kind of go over some things, spend some time with each other on one evening as we're, as we're continuing with this work.
Hey, can I just ask one other quick question?
Yes.
Is there a magic to the development of guardrails that are posed in the negative? In other words, is there anything about this that would not allow us to pose it in the positive? So that we could be more grammatically correct and appropriate?
Yeah, Duana, you want to answer that question?
No, go ahead, Kelly, you're fine.
Yeah, there, there is a reason for doing that. And so basically this, base, what this will do is tell our superintendent, you can do anything but. Like go forth and do anything but. So then we leave it open to say, you're in charge of management, we're in charge of governance.
So how about this?
These little parameters around you.
So how about we do just that then? The superintendent can do blah, 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 but they can't do this. In other words, I feel, I feel like, again, I, I'm, I'm putting my layperson's hat on too.
Yeah.
So, you know, our, our community knows nothing about what the three of you have been involved with around training and understanding this. So to be able to articulate the why behind this is going to be somewhat difficult and challenging. And so I'm wondering, because as much as it is for us to understand either what can or can't be done, I think it's equally important for our community to understand the construct behind this. So that's the only reason I asked that question is whether or not we can rephrase these in a way that really begin to articulate exactly what can happen and what can't happen.
Yeah, and we, we are planning on, once we get to a further stage, having interim guardrails and guardrails approved, that sort of thing. What we would propose is that we would have sessions with the community so that, that we can not only bring them along, help, help them understand, but also it will help in board meetings as well. If they are going to be participating and watching and being engaged in the process, they will need to understand this as well as, as it's a part of those meetings. But we don't want to start kind of bulging off the things that Tom and his team can do. We want to give him the, and empower him. You know, there's so much that we think, we think that Tom is the expert and is very innovative and dynamic. And if he comes up with an idea, we don't want him to not go with that idea or need to bring it to the board. And that's another reason why these are written in the format that they are, is because we want him to feel empowered to be able to go out and, and act on that innovation or that great idea, or the team's great ideas, so.
So how about this? Because I feel like, and I, I hate to wordsmith things, but I'm really caught up on this. I'm an English major, so I get caught up on this kind of stuff. But I feel like the ones where we talk about shall not cause or allow conditions, blah, 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 are really no different than where you say shall not act without. So if you could convert these to shall not cause or allow conditions, blah, 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 across each of the five, then that solves the problem for me. And I also think it becomes more clear to the community. So like say for instance, number one, the superintendent shall not cause or allow systems or policies that perpetuate systemic racism, anti racism. So does that make sense? I've written out a few of these.
Say that, say that again, Terry.
The superintendent shall not cause or allow systems or policies that perpetuate systemic perpetuating, ah. There is a nuance there. Do you understand where I'm going with this though? Because I think if we take out the double, double negatives, it just helps.
Yeah, we only have one that starts with shall not cause or allow. The others are shall not operate or shall not act without.
Right. Not act without is a double negative. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let it go. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push the envelope. I'm gonna stop.
Is the idea of the first one that we want the superintendent to perpetuate anti racism within our system?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We, we, it's not only not being anti racist, we want him to-
So it's not enough, right. So we're basically going with the stamped definitions here of it's not enough to not be racist. You have to be actively anti racist.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay.
And we think that that's a much stronger stance on anti racism. And we think that we, we are there right now, right? We think that a lot of the actions that the superintendent and his team are taking are, are meeting this guardrail already. We just want that work to continue. Yeah.
I'm just wondering though, if that's going to be, I, I understand what Terry's saying. I think that's going to be confusing for the community. I don't know how we rewrite that because we don't want it to be the superintendent shall perpetuate systemic, right? Because they have to be written in the shall not language, which takes me back to like three and a half years ago when I was struggling with that. But, um, yeah, I think honestly, here's where I am right now. I think we should just move forward with these and see Tom's interim guardrails. Because I don't think we have any better idea of whether or not these are the right guardrails until we see what Tom and his team are going to do with them or would like to do with them.
How do we feel about the word marginalized?
Yeah.
As a team?
I think we should take it out.
I can't see everyone while I'm sharing. So this is not something that I, you know, like Tom said earlier, a sword I will fall on or what? I'm not sure what sword I will die on, yeah.
I'm fine with taking it out because I think we understand the intent otherwise.
Okay.
Okay.
Same here.
All right. The superintendent shall not act without perpetuating systems that support the social emotional learning and needs of all students. Comments, feedback, concerns?
The superin shall not, say that one more time?
Superintendent shall not act without perpetuating systems that support the social, social emotional learning and needs of all students.
For some reason, that double negative makes more sense. I think it's because this one's really a triple negative with the anti.
Yeah.
Would this one be, would this be stronger to include the staff as well?
Where, where would you include the staff, Caitlin?
With students and staff?
But our goal is around social emotional for students, right?
Well, right, but we've got social emotional learning and needs. Like I, I'm not sure we should leave the adults out of the needs as, as part of the equation.
Yeah, I'm gonna push back on that and try and keep our focus around the students.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we thinking then that like, Caitlin, are you thinking that the staff have needs that they would have to have met before they could do this for kids? Like there's going to be resources, et cetera, et cetera?
Right.
I'm wondering, is that something that probably falls in an interim guardrail? Like I would expect to see an interim guardrail relate to the training or the resource allocation around what they're going to need to support the students, which that's all going to be staff.
Right.
So like I-
Absolutely.
Part of what I'm getting at too is like appropriate planning time. Like that, I mean, we know that's why our teachers are leaving, because they get burned out, because they can't get their jobs done. And I mean, that's one that, or we don't exactly have that in the limitations now, we could put it there. Like that's something I'm concerned about.
Do we have, well, I get, I guess I can, we can discuss that offline, but do we have data to show that? Or exit interviews that show that teachers are leaving because they don't have planning time?
Anecdotally, that's why I left. That's why a lot of the people I know who left, left, so.
I was gonna say, we hear that, it's been a while, Kim, since we've been able to meet with ISCA. But when we used to do the Saturday coffees monthly, like that was a thing that I heard every single time I went when I talked with other board members about going, like that was something we heard all the time of just, they don't have enough hours during their day to do the work they need to do. So like I understand where Caitlin's going with that. I don't know if this is the correct place to put that, but that is a concern that we hear, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would support seeing that moved into the, the district policy pieces. Similar to that, the bargaining item that you mentioned earlier, Caitlin.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, then, then that is both those concerns. But right now I don't see any of that, you know, so I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Hey, Kim, can you briefly explain the, the, the district policy pieces of how, how was, how would that work?
So what we would do, dependent on what Tom comes back with regards to interim guardrails looks like, we would look at the, the remaining items. And Kelly and I have already started this as a part of our cohort work, but we would look at the remaining items in the policy governance or the management limitations that exist and try and identify where they would live within district policy. So we have board policy and we have district policy. The board policy would turn into our achievement goals and our guardrails. And then district policy would hold, you know, and, and it does hold hundreds of other policies right now. They're all out there on the website. But that's, that's probably where we would propose things would land that do not fall into the framework of board. Our boards do now comes focused governance framework policies. Is there anything that I'm missing there, Kelly?
No, no. And I was going to say like our, when we think of our governance policies, it is going to be around goals, guardrails. And then there'll be a section around governing and delegation. So those are kind of those four little buckets that we would, as we're going through this work on our cohort end and our assignments, that is kind of putting that information there. But yes, if there's an opportunity to house it in district policy, because that seems to make greater sense than governance policy, then that's where it could be shifted to.
Kim, can you show the last, I think we've got three more there?
Any questions, concerns, edits on three?
This one, I, I don't have a problem with on its face. I think it's strong and I think it's necessary. But the one thing that we need to keep in mind when, when this is being measured is that there are certain factors outside of our control, namely the state of Iowa that jerks around all our people. And so we just need to remember that we can't solve this one on our own.
Yeah, the way I read this one, Caitlin, it's really more around the creation of the system required to effectively recruit, whether or not we actually snag people is another issue. But this to me is really around how we develop our systems, our recruitment and our retention that's laser focused on diverse and culturally responsive workforce.
Yeah, that, that's better said than the way I said it, but that's exactly what I mean is we can settle the goals we want, but there's also a couple of balls that we just can't play.
Yeah.
So then just, you know, knowing that we don't set the interim guardrails, it sounds as though, for Tom who's listening, as though then a interim guardrail would not be the percentage of our workforce that is non white, for instance. Sounds like the board's accepting of that. Is that all, is that track with what everybody's saying?
I would, I would entertain seeing data that is proportionate to our, or moving in the direction that is directly proportionate to our student population. I know that that's not going to be overnight, but to look at at least baseline, where are we at? And then how, how are the systems that we're putting in place moving us towards that?
I just, I mean, I, because I, I hear what Terry's saying about listen, I think this is about a system. That's a different measuring point than what we would typically look at with something like this, where you wouldn't say, well, here's where we are and we have an expectation to get here. And then three years later, if we're not there, then, you know, if we don't have those numbers, then, then there's a problem. And I think it's, I think it's generous and appropriate maybe for the board to look at this as a system requirement less a numeric goal to be met. But I want to hear if my colleagues, if that's the intent of my colleagues right now, before we move off of this.
Yeah, it'd definitely be a smart goal that would have data associated with it. But Tom would be creating that based on, you know, based on the data that he has. So he's not, I wouldn't expect him to set something that's not achievable.
Yeah, the other thing that I would offer is I really view this and our compliance, if you will, around this to be no different than oftentimes when we are not compliant with our monitoring reports, there's always the story behind the curve. And people have the ability to articulate the why behind either having exceeded or been- the ability to articulate the why behind either having exceeded or been successful in meeting your goal, or why you have not. So I, I think it's really around putting out what the expectation is, and then requiring the superintendent to help us understand why either it has not been met, or the challenges to meeting it, and being articulate on that, and helping us understand that. So I understand what you're saying. What you're saying, Rob, is that, okay, well, don't put this out there and then say, but you didn't do X. I understand exactly what you're saying, but I also think that it's really no different than all of our monitoring currently, where we are not in compliance, and there's always a story behind the curve. There's always an understanding of either why we have or why we haven't.
I'm, I'm gonna push back a little bit on that, because thinking back to when we did the evaluation a couple of months ago, enough of the people in here believe Tom was making too many excuses that they didn't want to extend his contract. So what, so yeah, if, if this is a process in setting up systems, I'm comfortable. If it's a process of measuring ratios of staffing and this and that, I'm much less comfortable, just because of the trends in, in teacher prep programs and, and retention broadly. Like, I, I'm not comfortable projecting that we can add 6% of this or 10% of that in any given year at the current moment.
And I don't, I don't necessarily think that this is a reason not to move forward with the language as written. Ultimately, Tom's gonna give us his interpretation through an interim guardrail, and I'm fine with all of these, with him interpreting these as his things, but I just want my colleagues to be clear on the record before, you know, before we, we resolve this thing, and preferably tonight, but it certainly sounds like folks would like to measure this based on the, the percentage of, of staff that identify in certain ways. And so that's, that's just helpful for me to be aware of. How Tom interprets it and the goal he sets, I, I'll, I'll wait to see that.
Yeah, he, you know, there might be a, an interim guardrail that looks at, at recruitment, and another that looks at retention, and maybe a third, you know, I'm not, but you could, I can see like five possible interim guardrails in this one statement that could be written. So I think that would all be able to show in a smart fashion whether or not we are headed in the right direction of moving towards a, a responsive workforce that is going to, based on data, improve outcomes for our kiddos. So I, I hear what you're saying, Rob, but I, yeah, I do intend this to be smart, but I think it could be any, like I said, I could see five potential, just off the top of my head, what possible interim guardrails could be for this.
Are we moving to number four?
Yep, next one.
I, I have massive problems with this one. I, I understand the intent, and the intent is to keep more kids in, in the primary classroom. But if you, if, if I were still teaching and you brought this to me and said, this is, this is happening starting, you know, next year, with, with their current infrastructure, it's, it's gonna cause a panic and, and it's gonna cause bad, bad outcomes as people misinterpret that in the buildings.
And so this one was rewritten based on the feedback that we received from this one right here. The superintendent shall not allow adult comfort or inconvenience to take precedence over student needs. Throughout conversation, we got to kind of, the root intent of this came down to our, you know, and Tom expressed it in a couple of monitoring sessions with us, that students were not, they were losing instructional time, and were not being kept in the classroom for various needs, or for various reasons, rather. And so that's how, that's the, where this one started, and based on your feedback, we landed here. And we've got to remember that student outcomes won't change until adult behaviors change.
Yeah, and, and right, and the underlying thing is, is correct, I get it. But I also understand that when you've got a kid that's a tornado in the middle of the class, that determines the rest of the kid's instructional setting too. Like, and, and we don't have enough support to come in and keep, you know, the, the one tornado in each class that we're currently experiencing. So, you know, this one's gonna take a lot more background before that's even plausible, let alone ideal.
Yeah, the, the, another angle of that, that, that's giving me some pause is students for whom we, we need to create a different setting for the safety of others. And I think we do an exemplary job of that. We've not, we've not expelled a student for over half a decade. We continue to serve those students and engage with those students, but because of, you know, behaviors like, you know, firearm possession and, and drug distribution and so forth. We work really hard at providing an appropriate environment for them, but, but their behavior did determine their setting. And if that's something that we need to revisit, I just want, wanna make sure the board is clear on, on that. Because there are some, some things that literally are, are out of our control, and if we, if we don't address them in a way that is acceptable to, you know, the, the, the bulk of our population, we're, we're going to cause some fear and trepidation amongst our families. And staff, for that matter.
Anyone else on number four, any feedback you have on, on that particular guardrail?
I think for this one, it's gonna take some strong interim guardrails, and some of those, I think, are things that Kaylin alluded to, like, it is gonna take some systems changes in buildings, you know, to, to make this a reality. And I also understand what Tom is saying, of sometimes there are those extreme outlying cases, but I think, I think, at least for me as a board member, what I'm looking at, when I'm looking at this, is, you know, that average kid who gets sent out of the classroom on a weekly or, like, twice a week basis, because they, like, can't keep their hands to themselves, like, because they're just constantly, middle school boys touch each other constantly, like, you know, or they just can't stop talking, or just some of those, like, behaviors that are normal for kids, but they just do them a lot, and so they get sent out of, like, trying to find supports for teachers so that those kids can stay in classrooms, I think, is what we're looking at for this. Like, we're not looking at the, the 3%, you know, at the top of the pyramid, we're talking about like that 15%, like, that level two kid, I think, if we're talking MTSS. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not, you know, this is looking at the big picture, not those outlier kiddos. And again, this was, this was written based on feedback that we got during monitoring sessions, you know, so at least that was the initial intent, was to address what we were hearing and monitoring as a, as a root cause for students not receiving appropriate grade level instruction or instructional time.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, my, my problem with this one goes to, to what you're saying, like, it might be, we might think it's focused on the bulk of the kids, but as, as written, it cuts out a lot of options, just because this is a limit, right? So I wonder if rewriting it to say something about, shall not allow students to be, I don't, I don't like the word, you know, not optimal, because optimal would be in the classroom, but some kids are not succeeding in the classroom. I don't know, I'll, I'll think about it more, but as written, I, I don't like that one at all, because I find it very, very limiting.
How do others feel about the way that it's written, before we move on to number five?
Yeah, I definitely believe I totally understand the why behind this, but I do have to agree that there are going to be times when there will need to be a decision made about the instructional setting for a student based on behavior. And the way this is written, it does not allow for that latitude in situations where we have an extreme issue that requires something to happen. I mean, it sort of feeds, you know, in reading this, and I don't wanna bring up, you know, bad blood or anything, but in reading this, it literally feeds into all of those stories that were on the news over a year ago about what was happening in our classrooms. And the fact that we can't, you know, kids were not being removed, we were tolerating and allowing all of these behaviors to disrupt an entire classroom when one student was acting out. So I, I think that we're setting ourselves up, in my opinion, if we leave this the way it is currently phrased. I think I understand where you wanna go, I just don't know that this is the right way to frame it.
Could I ask, because I, I, I think, out of respect to Kim and, and Kelly and Duana, I'd, I'd like to try and get it to resolution tonight on, on this language. And one way to try is, Tom, what's the ideal for a guy that's never spent a day professionally in a classroom before? What's the ideal that we would try and get to, that's, doesn't have to be framed in a negative?
Well, you know, I, I, I think, I think we've actually made significant improvement in this area, and I don't think we're really talking about the, you know, the Hansies kids, or the kids that won't stop talking. I think people, I don't, I don't think the general public really understands the, the mental health needs that a whole lot of our students bring to the, you know, bring to the classroom. So it does get to be really challenging. It's something that I think we've made some, some strides in, but I, I, I think I'd have to give this one a little bit more thought to, to really give you a good answer to that question, Rob. I think it's the right question.
Could, could I?
This one, to me, to me, this one suggests, though, that to me, this one suggests that it's the placement of students, you know, like, we're placing them in a, in a restrictive environment. And I, I don't think that's what, what we're getting at, as I listen to this discussion, but that's what it seems to suggest.
Yeah, that definitely wasn't the intent.
No, I know that that wasn't the intent, but that's where I, that's kind of where I, I went.
Can I, I just wanna suggest, you know, in a handful of these, we talk about system. We identify it as a, as a system, being basically the, the, the underlying ideal, and this might be one that's helped by a system, because it's, I think, I think we share a common goal here of wanting to make sure that students are in the classroom, receiving instruction for as many hours as feasible. And, but doing that is not, I think we all also identify that doing that is not strictly limited to variables within the classroom. And so then, like, Tom suggested, hey, listen, in the classroom might not be the ideal learning environment for a particular student. You know, does this necessarily identify with that or not? So I, I was almost just gonna, I'm, I am not an English major like Terry, so I was just gonna say something along the lines, because I see what you're working on, Kim, of just saying the superintendent shall not cause or, or, or perpetuate a system that allows student behaviors to determine instructional setting. You know, or to, or perpetuate a system that solely allows student behaviors to determine instructional setting. Because I think, you know, student behaviors are going to determine instructional setting in certain circumstances. But if that's the primary factor, then that's obviously not what we're going for. So, and I think then that some of the stuff that Tom talks about of like, hey, listen, I think we're really close to where you want us to be on this, needs to be part of then, we need to lead him into that, of saying, okay, listen, here's our, here's what we're going for, and then he'll understand that and, you know, talk to us about some of the, you know, some, some of the, the, honestly, this one leads into SEL, really, of some of the practices that are, that, that he's putting in place so that students can, you know, self-regulate better to stay in the classroom. So, just, just trying to get us to resolution.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I could even see, like, disproportionality being a possible interim guardrail here.
I really like, well, A, as long as it was solely, if it gets into there, that solely allows, therefore, we could leave it to be a factor, but it's gonna be the determining factor.
Do you have a, any edits, Kaylin, to the wording on this?
Yeah, I would just pop the word solely, or, or primarily, even, before the word allows. Like, not solely, I don't, I don't like primarily, now that I think about it, but meaning, meaning that just because a kid's a shithead, we're not gonna keep him out of the classroom. Like, we'll figure something out with that kid who's disrupting the rest.
Well, yeah, I mean, like, the system should be diverse enough to offer avenues to continue that student's instruction. That's what we want. And, and we want evidence that that is, that is the case, and if it's not immediately the case, then there's progress to that happening.
So could we live in the house of, of A? And I just wanna be mindful of everyone's time, it is 8:32, but if you would give us a few more minutes, if that's okay, maybe to knock this out, but I, I am watching the clock, I just want y'all to know that.
Kaylin, you just wanted solely before allows? Which makes sense, I mean, I understand that. I think that, honestly, that makes it more, more responsible.
Yeah, I know, is that a word?
I don't know.
It is.
We can get a thesaurus of it later, but, but yeah, that's my intent.
Yeah.
Okay, if four looks good, if we could move to number five, that last one. I felt like everyone was good with number five, but just wanna double check to make sure.
So can I maybe just seek a bit of clarification here? When we add in qualifiers like significant, either significant allocation or significant change, is that subject to interpretation by the superintendent? Or are we expecting? Yeah, I guess maybe, that's the question. Are we expecting the superintendent to interpret and define that?
Yes, so when he comes back to us with his interim guardrails, that's his interpretation of what's been written here. So if we, as a board, do not agree with that interim guardrail, we may have to go back and be more specific in this writing, or, like, you're, you're bringing up a good point, the word significant is, could be a very large range, depending on if I'm looking at it, or if you're looking at it, or any, anyone else. So, you know, if we, as a board, don't agree with that interpretation, we would go back to the drawing board. So if you feel that this is leading us into that direction, we can be more specific or make adjustments.
Yeah, I, I, I'm very interested in interpretation on this one. Especially, well, definitely around the allocation or reallocation of resources, but also a Especially, well, definitely around the allocation or reallocation of resources, but also around the educational experience. Interpretation here is really going to be key to making sure that we get to the root of what was intended with this. So I'm fine with leaving it the way it is, but I'm definitely going to be laser focused on the interpretive language that supports sort of the what behind this particular guardrail. And I have to assume you guys have something in mind, having put this here.
I, I don't want to bring us back to number four, but Kalen, would you be okay with exclusively rather than solely?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I was going to say, I did a little word search here and exclusively, only, merely, just, uniquely, specially. And I agree exclusively, I think is a good one.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we have gone through these five guardrails. I think that now we would be able to give this over to the superintendent. I just want to make sure the board is okay with that. If you just want to give me a head nod or thumbs up, we're good with giving this over to the superintendent now. I see some cameras, but I can't, everyone doesn't, I see, okay. I figured if there was any no's, I would pop on real quick and say no. So we're going to give this over.
Yeah, email, maybe for us, sleep on it or whatever process you'd like, Madam Chair.
I would say we're gonna just give this over to the superintendent. We went through this, I think, pretty thoroughly. So I don't think we, I think everybody's okay and agreeing in, in that. So Kim, if you wouldn't mind, just copying that in just one document and we'll get that over to Tom. I guess the question would be time for you to get some interim guardrails for us. What are you thinking?
And the target is to have two or three for each of these? Is that correct?
One to three.
One to three.
Would it be appropriate for me to share those on the third or by the third, if not before?
Yes.
Our meeting is August 10th, correct? Our next regular board meeting?
Ours is the third, our regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's the third?
The, the first, the first Tuesday in August.
Okay, I just thought in August, traditionally we went to the second because of.
National night, yeah. Yeah, we did that for a couple of years. I noticed that on the calendar this year, it was back on the first.
Okay, I just had put it in my calendar, I think, when I thought it was going to be and didn't actually check our official calendar. So I will update that, thank you. It's good to know, or I wouldn't have been there, y'all.
Yeah. So Tom, I think that that would work. I know that we, we could add that to our work session if that would be okay, if you want to share those with us. And if you do get those sooner, feel free to share that with the board by email as well, at least so you, you all would have that to kind of look on and think on, you know, before we would talk about that during our work session. And we also will be doing our board evaluation as well during that work session, but we could add this also.
Okay.
All right, y'all, you gave me nine extra minutes, so I appreciate it. Thank you for allowing us to be able to get through this this evening, Tom. Thank you as well for being with us this evening. And you will be getting a, just one date in mind. So Aaron's going to send that out to see if you're available. I'm going to also ask AJ to give me a few other dates, but that would just be for us to have an evening together, just to kind of have a review of everything, be together, but also have him present as we continue moving in our SLFG work.
I just want to say thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your feedback and the time together tonight. I'm, I'm grateful for all the input and that we're working together and heading in this direction. So thanks.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you guys for all your hard work on this too, we really appreciate it.
We are happy to do it. So we've become nerds in this area now, I think. So we'll continue to keep, keep trucking with this. So I appreciate your all time and enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.